...of free outdoor movies and counting. And when you see one of these films, "Al Fresco," there are some definite must-have items.
So most importantly, we brought popcorn. I love popcorn. I make it all the time, so...
And you gotta have it for a movie, right?
Yes, of course, yeah.
It's really nice. Bring the dogs. It's a fun, fun environment. Love it.
This is our neighborhood. This is our community. These are our people. So it's nice to see everybody kind of bonding over movies, isn't it?
The Silver Lake Picture Show Summer Movie Series has kept growing each year since it started in 2012, with between four to seven movies a summer.
We were a couple of filmmakers who had just finished two short films. And we were like, how do we get an audience to see this? In our first year, we used to build our screen out of lumber and canvas. Took two and a half hours to build, two and a half hours to take down.
But nowadays, there's a 30-foot state-of-the-art screen. In tonight's film, the big Lebowski is about to strike. It's a fitting tribute for the last show of the Silver Lake season, as the bowling alley scenes were filmed right in the area at the former Hollywood Star Lanes.
Nobody calls me Lebowski. You got the wrong guy. I'm the Dude, man.
Not only do you get the big picture here, you get a smaller, artier one as well, because each film screened here is paired with a short film made by a local filmmaker.
It's a great mix, yeah. These are my kind of people.
And look at that. Looks like someone special is making an appearance tonight. Is that who we think it is? I mean, if it looks like the Dude, dresses like the Dude, drinks like the Dude, is it?
And what are you drinking?
This is a nectar of the gods, AKA a white Russian.
Another special drop-in visitor, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, who helps fund the event.
I'm a huge supporter. I am a cinema buff and an arts enthusiast and a supporter of the arts and culture, of course. And so we want to support events like this.
And here's another bit of community spirit. The Silver Lake Picture Show also honors a community group each year with a $1,000 donation. This year, it's St. Anne's, which helps low-income families. All in all, a feel-good kind of night.
Set up a chair, bring a picnic, bring your family, and you've got a free night of entertainment.
And by the way, each May before the start of the season, local filmmakers can submit their short films to get screened before the big film screens. Visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Celebrate Asian culture at a music and arts fest. Roaring Nights returns at the L.A. Zoo, and Little Tokyo pulls out all the stops for the Nisei Week Japanese Festival. All this in Things to Do. 88 Rising's Head in the Clouds Music and Arts Festival makes a return this summer on August 17th at Los Angeles State Historic Park. Returning for year two, the festival will be a day-long celebration of Asian youth culture and creativity, highlighting the best in music, food, art, and fashion from around the globe. 88 Rising's Head in the Clouds lands Saturday, August 17th at 3:00 p.m. For more information, visit 88rising.com. Join the L.A. Zoo for Roaring Nights, an adults-only, multi-genre dance event. This summer party offers interactive art activities, live bands, pop-up zoo talks, and more. Enjoy a silent disco and an open-air lounge with food trucks on site. It's fun for the big kids at Roaring Nights at the Zoo, happening Friday, August 16th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. For details, visit travelzoo.com. The Gay Men's Choir of Los Angeles celebrates Stonewall at 50. This truly historic concert will feature over 500 singers, including members of the New York City's Gay Men's Chorus and 23 other choruses from around the country, in a performance to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. GMCLA 40 makes joyful noise at the Walt Disney Concert Hall Friday, August 16th. For tickets, visit gmcla.org. Celebrating 79 years, the Nisei Week Japanese Festival brings the streets of Little Tokyo alive with food, culture, arts, and entertainment. Come experience Japanese culture for two whole weekends packed full of free festivities. It's all happening at the 79th Nisei Week Japanese Festival, August 11th, 17th, and 18th, at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center. For more details, visit jaccc.org. Join the Special Needs Network for the 14th Annual Back-to-School Community Health and Resource Fair. Enjoy a fun-filled day for children with autism, special needs, and communities that serve them. You'll find resource vendors, health and mental health screenings, food, free backpacks, and school supplies. Festivities kick off at the Urban Magic Johnson Recreation Park. All are welcome at the Special Needs Network's Back-to-School Fair, Saturday, August 17th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit specialneedsnetwork.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, August 13th. Want to welcome you to City Hall and to this City Council chamber. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Harris, Dawson, Weezart, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Eleven members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Buscayino seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Corretts seconds. Next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, let's all rise. Mr. Rue, would you lead us today in our flag salute?
Everyone could please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Let's continue going through the agenda.
Mr. President, for item 36, there is a request to send this matter back to the rules, elections, and intergovernmental relations.
Okay, so ordered without objection. Continue.
Items 1 through 12 are items noted for public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards on 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 13 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, thank you. Specials members, I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 22 through 48 are items to which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on 37, 38, 40, 41, 44, 46, and 47, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. So please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 49 through 53 are items for closed session.
Okay, let me defer to Mr. Krikorian on these items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 49 through 53 are all routine settlements that have been considered and approved by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations on all of those items. Those can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Seeing no questions, if you'd read those items, and then we'll prepare to vote on them.
Item number 49 in the case entitled "The West Valley Christian Center versus City of Los Angeles," there's a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement. Item number 50 in the case entitled "Linda Richard versus City of Los Angeles," there's a recommendation to expend $300,000 in settlement. Item number 51 in the case entitled "City of Los Angeles versus Somar Foothill LLC," there is the recommendation is clean energy is given the option to remove and take the CNG station when its current agreement with NV expires on April 30th, 2021. Item number 52 in the case entitled "Tata Communications America Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles," there's a recommendation to expend $272,301.3 in settlement. And finally, in item number 53 in the case of Nello De Giannamennico versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $175,000 in settlement.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings council to items called special, general public comment.
Okay, let's start off with Mr. Previn. I saw him earlier. Mr. Previn, items 7, 9, 10 through 12, 40, 44, 46, and general public comment. Good morning and welcome.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I take note that item 52, she read it out without saying $272,000. So just for the record, let that reflect. And I think that's what she meant. It sounded like $2.72, which, correct me if I'm wrong. But good work on voting urgently on those items before taking comment when you know I've signed up. I find that slightly falls beneath the brown action.
We'll speak to your items.
We're gonna find out. We're gonna find out. Let's get to the... I agree, sir. We're all working together on this. When it comes to $15,000 for a guardrail, I appreciate that Corretts is willing to step up. The question of whether or not he can get it from Llewellyn to do it over on Spolvita. By the way, Spolvita is not the side where Leo Beck is positioned on Spolvita. We're talking about the Valley side, near Valley Meadow. He wants to put up a guardrail because the people want to be protected. I don't blame him, frankly. The question is, with that Leo Beck claim against the city, is anybody gonna stand up, including Corretts, and say enough already? We can't sue the city folks because, in fact, our own city fire department does not have a final action report that determined that there was any individual... They never found the homeless individual, sir. I know you're going around saying you want to be more sensitive and appropriate with folks who are experiencing some of the most disenfranchising experiences you can have as being homeless. We don't want to blame them for something in writing that Corretts continues to rubber-stamp by refusing to admit that, in fact, we don't have any clue. Could have been a catalytic converter. Could have been a kid smoking up in the hill. Nobody knows, okay? But the fiction that was generated, created, and promulgated, no disrespect to Peter Sanders, he's allowed to bully people in Studio City all he wants. Those are separate matters. But, sir, please, get Corretts to step forward. He and Catherine Barger cannot cling to one another and lie to the public here in Studio City, here in America, here in L.A., okay? So honestly, let's just resolve that once and for all. Getting very tired of talking about that. I like that you're cheating money, but it's upsetting when I find that it's for people who paid bail to get out. And then you're claiming you can't find any way to get them the money back. So you're taking 350 grand. That's of concern. But the other side of it, you've got H-Sid, which is a terrific operation, apparently are gonna be letting go something like $1.2 million of uncollectible debt. These are the debts that they can't get back as people have been fully crushed out of a pulp of life. Now, the fire department, interestingly enough, because it's a place that's very, very flexible with people they like and very inflexible with people they don't, is something like $19.1 million of uncollectible stuff that we're just... So this is the day when we're just forgiving and forgetting. And people appreciate that to a degree, but they really want to know that it's on the up and up. And I don't find the kinds of notifications from this city to the people who they're screwing particularly fair. That's my particular opinion. I speak for myself on that. Nice work on the sidewalk dedication, sir. If anybody can make a nice dedication of a sidewalk, it's you. And we appreciate all the work you've been doing. And we appreciate all the work you've been doing in your district before you exit.
Thank you. Let's give him his one minute.
Right. My one minute is, I want to just call out that related companies owned by Stephen Ross in part, he has a big percentage. Krikorian and his comrades in, you know, malfeasance at the Sportsman's Lodge are gonna cut down all the trees next week. And Equinox, they're gonna put up an Equinox. So I just, I bring that to people's attention for the full optics. Because, you know, I think we all appreciate the urban canopy. We hear a lot of people yammering on about how important it is, and yet in Studio City we're facing a disaster at Sportsman's Lodge. I'm gonna try to get the tree report today. We're also facing at Weddington, which was by Fred Weddington himself, I believe, earmarked as open recreational publicly accessible space. See the downtown LA news article about how important open recreational public space is, is gonna be hijacked by our private school. And what their plans are now are completely unacceptable, but they would scare children. They're taking down about a hundred beautiful old trees. I don't have the exact number because it's not clear, but it's a lot and it is breathtakingly upsetting.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, members, before I call up Ms. McAllister, you're next. Let's vote on items seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve and add item forty to that. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, thirty-eight, forty-one and forty-seven and then your general public comment. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Let's start with thirty-eight. Here you want another bridge home built in twelve hundred West Eighth Street. Now, I've done the research and I know how many bridge homes we have now. Now, the city comptroller, Ron Galperin, I've been going over to their office for a couple of years complaining about no HHH housing being built. And they haven't given me any answers. And now he comes and makes a video three weeks ago saying none has been built. It's too late for that now. We've got millions of people who are homeless now. So I think we should not elect him again. He's the comptroller. We should not elect him again. Number forty-seven. Now here's something. You want nineteen point nine million dollars to build a sixty-unit multifamily housing project at sixty-seven fourteen South Main, sixty-seven twenty-two South Main, one one five East Sixty-Eight Street, one two one East Sixty-Eight Street. Now this doesn't make sense because last week I complained that you wanted sixty million to fix up a multifamily building. So it doesn't make sense. This nineteen point nine million is more realistic. See, you're saying you're building this from scratch, but then you want to fix up one for sixty million. Now if the mayor keeps signing off on this, we're gonna get him out of office real soon. Now forty-seven, Curran Price wants nineteen point nine million. That is Curran Price's district where he wants this project to be built. We'll be driving over there. This is not HHH either. This is not HHH bond money because if it was, it would say that. So I've been over to Mr. Curran Price's district and ninety percent of the residents are illegal alien Mexicans. Many of them don't even speak English. So you're not doing your people, African Americans, no justice. Now, you want this recreational park. I'm for recreational parks, we need more housing. Now you keep building all these shelters. Remember, shelters keep them in for like maximum sixty days and they throw them back on the street. The workers steal most of the items that the homeless should be getting. Now I also want to say that we need to know, we know what you guys vote on here. In here doesn't really mean too much because the mayor has to sign off. So I want to know what the mayor is signing off on. Because I just read that that ninety-three point one million you wanted for the census, that you got two million. That's what I read. I do a lot of research. I read you didn't get the ninety-three point one million, you wanted to do the census, you got two million. So I want some proof and I need to know where to go to know what the mayor is signing off on. Is he reducing different items that you want? These people are very disrespectful over here. They're just talking, talking, talking. Why don't they go outside and talk? We want you to visit recalltheLAMare.com. RecalltheLAMare.com. They've picked, picking up steam online. They're getting about a thousand people signing up in a day, in a day. I've been checking.
Okay, let's give you your one minute.
Now I've received information. I did a Freedom of Information Act and I now know how many shelters, you call them bridge housing that you have now. You have two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty bridge shelters. And even in this agenda today, you want some more. You're not building any housing. Okay, now, these units I gave out today, they're probably never being built. I went over some two years ago that never have been built. You claimed they were being built. So we need to ride around and check this out. I want to say, God bless President Trump. The administration has started a new, well, they are really doing what they should have been doing. Illegal aliens who are here and if they get any kind of welfare or any kind of Medicaid or anything, they will not get citizenships. We can ship their butts right back to their country, okay? I want my people off the street. I want them off the Skid Row. And you three black members on this council should be working hard for that. I say God bless President Trump. He's doing a fantastic job and I'm not gonna stop fighting until I get my people off the street.
Thank you, thank you. If I could get Mr. Schmidt, Corey Schmidt, item forty-one, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six and general public comment.
You guys hear me okay?
Go ahead.
All right. Well, since it's the first thing on the list and I'm sure you'll probably cut me off. What did I say? What did I say? I said number one through six, two through, twenty-two through thirty-six lighting districts. I don't want to see it on the agenda again. And what's it doing?
Mr. Schmidt, you speak to items forty-one, forty-three, forty-five and forty-six. So go ahead on those items, sir.
All right. So we'll get to that in a second. Forty-one in regards to acquiring a park? Yes, I'm for this. Forty-three, Spring Street Park funding? Yes. Forty-four for Great Streets funding? Yes, but it has to be a great street. Forty-five in regards to car sharing, rideshare programs? Yeah, sure, that's fine. Number forty-six, art on Crenshaw? Yes, because aesthetics change lifestyle and mind patterns and I think that it's just generally good to have art expression. So I would like to now move to my general public comment.
Could you give him his one minute for general public comment?
Okay, so since, I'm not able to talk about it since it's not up there. What did I say? I said I don't want to see it on there, so now I gotta say what I gotta say, which is that, are you fucking kidding me? Do you know how dangerous this shit is? Do you? Do you know that it causes necrosis in plants? Do you know that it can boil your fucking blood? I'm not opposed to the technology, but there needs to be some safeguards. And no one will sit here and work with me to make sure it happens. I want autonomous cars. Yes, I want the future, but not at the expense of potentially lethal technology. So let's talk or I don't ever, I'm just gonna keep talk, I'm gonna keep saying it.
Okay, before we continue, why don't we, Madam Clerk, vote on items thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-four, forty-six and forty-seven? Let's open the roll. So it's items again, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-four, forty-six and forty-seven. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to item thirty-seven, Rita and Jamie. Rita Speck, Jamie Garcia, come forward. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, sir. Getting organized. Good morning, thank you very much. My name is Rita Speck. I'm with Kaiser Permanente. I appreciate your service. Nice to see you all. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present Kaiser Permanente's view on SB three forty-three, which is currently before the State Assembly's Appropriations Committee. We're asking the City Council to not take a position on the bill. As we shared with you through a copy of our letter that we sent to the Assembly Appropriations Bill that was delivered to your office about a week or so ago, we oppose the bill unless it's further amended. Kaiser Permanente values transparency and understands the importance to both policy and consumers. And we've agreed to nearly all the provisions in SB three forty-three. We've been very engaged with the legislature and have agreed to report to OSHPA all the information for each of our thirty-six hospitals instead of regionally. Once OSHPA has updated its technology to allow automatic electronic upload of the data, and OSHPA is currently working on its systems for that purpose. We continue to work with the legislature to request a reasonable delay.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We ask for a no vote.
Thank you. If we could get, please come forward. Good to see you.
Good morning. Jaime Garcia with the Hospital Association of Southern California. The Hospital Association, on behalf of the hundred and eighty-one member hospitals and health systems, strongly urge the City Council here today not to adopt this resolution and stay neutral. Given the highly public and heated negotiations between Kaiser Permanente and its union, it's quite transparent that this effort is an attempt by SEIU, UHW, to politicize the contract negotiation process. In your role as representatives for the entire city, I urge you not to get roped into a discussion that is purely meant to further local labor political, local labor's political agenda rather than deliberating sound policy. I thank you for your consideration. Again, HASP urges you not to take a position on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that ends the discussion. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Two requests. One is to call item number forty-six forthwith and the other is to call item number thirty-nine forthwith.
Okay, let's, those two items forthwith without objection. Okay, let's start with some general public comment. Oh, and let me indicate that multi-comment has been concluded. So let me get Ken Shearer, Ron Gorham, Lauren Natoli, Zach Strasters. Please come forward when I call your name. Yes, sir, identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm here representing the American Cinematheque Board of Directors and specifically concerning a petition on the action of our sale of the Egyptian Theater to Netflix. There are a number of items in the petition that concern the board based on the lack of facts, but there are two that I think will be interesting to the, to the council that I'd like to stress. First of all, the sale to Netflix from the American Cinematheque, which by the way, is a 501(c)(3). We feel and council has advised is within the compliance of our current agreement with the City of Los Angeles and therefore offers no conflicts should this, should this transaction continue. The second piece of the petition which concerns us is the implication that somehow the Egyptian Theater will not continue as a cultural arts organization dedicated to film, film exhibition. I want to assure the council that the reason we pursued this, the reason we pursued this arrangement is...
Thank you. What was your name again?
My name is Ken Shearer.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good morning. Zach with the ARMS Organization once again. And we just kinda want to put out a general call to all the council districts. We're looking to expand programming and we need facilities. So another couple of strapping young guys have come up here today to talk about homelessness, to talk about jobs, to talk about some of the programming features that we work on day in and day out with ARMS. But we're looking for space to do programming. We've worked in districts nine and one and we're currently in fourteen, but we're also looking to expand to your district. So if you have facilities that are unused or underused or you've got communities that need revitalization, we really encourage you to reach out because we want to partner with you, we want to partner with your district. It's a great opportunity to engage youth programming, anti-recidivism programming, gang intervention and prevention programming, as well as jobs outreach. So again, our contact information, armsoflosangeles@gmail.com. You can look at our website, armsofla.com or contact us, three two three seven nine four three eight two one. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Roy Gorham and I came before this council to, I have an unusual request. I've been working for sixty years. I've been kicked out. I can't go on no social security office because they closed my bank account, they changed the address, changed my password. I went all the way to the Supreme Court in Washington DC, First Street, Northeast Washington DC. There they sit there again. They refused to accept my case. AAA and all this association is into the social security and the post office and every place else. And a person that has done, I've gotten awards from this city for the things that I have done. I shouldn't have to be suffering. They have taken checks from me. I got proof of it. They have taken checks, they have closed my business.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
That's the end of it, right?
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself. And again, Richard Shave, Christian Mendez, Johnny Padilla, Tim Dogerty. Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lauren Natoli. I'm from the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Top experts at USC, UCLA and UC Berkeley have found that rent control will, will help stabilize the current California housing affordability crisis. Los Angeles needs to enact tight rent control to help our residents stay housed and safe. Crooked landlords exploit the Ellis Act and other laws to continually hike prices and ice out hardworking tenants on low income. It may seem ideal and picturesque now to have shiny new luxury apartments in Los Angeles, but at the rate the rents are skyrocketing, the problem will become unfixable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Johnny Padilla and I'm here on behalf of the ARMS Organization. First, let me say what an awesome privilege it is to be in front of you, men and women of the City Council. We've worked tirelessly here to help make sure that we have the lives that we are looking for out there. And we at ARMS recognize that without you guys, there will be so much undone in our city. So we thank you for hearing us out every week here in these council hearings. When you hear the name ARMS, know this, that you have allies in the streets of LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Christian Mendez and I am here on behalf of ARMS to basically talk about the homelessness we're having, crisis, and have a question, what are we doing about it? And ARMS has a solution. We are, have recovery homes and you can find us at losangelasarms@gmail.com or visit us at our website, armsofla.com. Our phone number is three two three seven nine four three eight two one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Richard Shave and I've come here to give public comment on council file number nine three dash one eight four zero. And I wanted to submit with my comment a petition we have about this. I'm gonna just leave that there. Thanks so much. So I just wanted to ask council to get the city attorney to issue an opinion on the proposed sale of the Egyptian Theater. That sale was, is council file number nine three dash one eight four zero. To issue an opinion, we, the petitioners, are concerned that this sale goes against the, the spirit, if not the wording, of the CRA sale of the Egyptian cinema, of the Egyptian Theater to the American Cinematheque. And also I want to note that in a report in nineteen ninety-four, the CRA questioned the American Cinematheque's ability to fundraise should they sell the theater. So this is something of great importance and we'd like council to be aware and be better stewards of this theater. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And if I could get, before the next speaker speaks, if we could get Mickey Jackson, Josephine Tang, Lydia Martinez. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tim Doherty and I'm here to speak briefly on the American Cinematheque. Hi, my name is Tim Doherty, and I'm here to speak briefly on the American Cinematech Egyptian Theater case. I'm a member of the American Cinematech. It's a wonderful organization. They do an awful lot for Los Angeles, for the film-going public here in Los Angeles. Many festivals, individual screening, silent movies, and I'm concerned about what's going to happen now, and I feel a little bit in the dark that members and other people really don't know what's going on with this. And I would like to see some clarity, some transparency, so we all know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, identify yourself.
Mickey Jackson with HF. I want to caution us all here. This sale is questionable. No one has verified that it is legal under the CRA contract, and as we know, the CRA still exists as a successor agency. This was sold, it was public asset, public property, it was sold to Cinematech for $1 to provide programming. It was not sold to them for $1 to sell to make millions. This is a private entity. This violates the spirit for certain, but we could end up, we poor taxpayers whose asset we are now seeing sold to a private company that intends to do nothing but charge money and program for themselves, which is fine, but not here. We could see a problem with liability for us taxpayers, for the city, because this may not be legal. It is not transparent, the members have not been noticed, this process has been behind-
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Josephine Tang. I'm with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, speaking to homelessness. So Californians are living in their vehicles, all of that's becoming more commonplace, especially in San Francisco and LA. So, you know, rent is climbing, luxury apartments are being built so rapidly, and our city and the surrounding suburbs are becoming more and more expensive to live in. So we need to allow people to find solace in living in their cars. Vehicle dwelling is not an easy life, but making it legal will help those people and keep them off from, like, away from sleeping in our streets. It's morally unjust to criminalize these people for trying to sleep safely in the protection of their own vehicles. Thank you.
Is there Ms. Martinez, Lydia? Please come forward, I don't see it. So that closes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before this body at this time?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Buscagno.
Personal privilege, if I may. Today is my grandmother's 99th birthday.
Happy birthday.
Nona Sarina, she's not watching, she's not listening, but we called her this morning, and we'll be celebrating at mom's house, so just wanted to wish her, she's everyone's grandmother, and she's brought so much faith, love, and hope into our lives. Just want to wish her a happy birthday, Nona, I love you.
It's a blessing, Mr. Buscagno. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? If we could all rise for adjourning motions? All rise. Mr. Left side? Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of a dear friend and an American hero, Captain Art Sherman of the US Air Force, who passed away August 7th. Art served our country during World War II as a bombardier on a B-24s, and over the years, he's been instrumental in building local organizations, specifically an organization called Wings Over Wendy's. He was recently the chairman emeritus, and he, his tireless efforts to promote veterans' community continues to bring camaraderie and a sense of belonging to many of our local veterans. He had this idea, if you can get veterans together to share fellowship and to talk amongst yourselves, that they would, that would benefit the veterans themselves and ultimately spill out into the community. And he started it as a very simple thing, going to Wendy's and having some veterans meet together. And it grew, and it blossomed, and then not only was it at one Wendy's, but they moved to another one, and then I got them located at the cultural center at Tarzana, and they have multiple chapters. And it's been an amazing organization, and those veterans have not only brought fellowship to each other, but they have gone out to the schools, and they have, you've seen them at different things, you see them marching in the parade. It's just, it's been really a special organization. Since 2001, the group brought together World War II, Korean, Vietnam War veterans and other veterans to share this, to share camaraderie together. Just last week, on July 29th, we joined Art to celebrate his 98th birthday, and it was a surprise party that was thrown by his daughters Judy and Linda, as well as the fellow veterans from Wings Over Wendy's. It's always been a treat to spend time with him. He and I have been in the Memorial Day Parade on multiple times where he's ridden in the vehicle with me. He loved our community, and he strives to make it better. And for those of you who are lucky enough to know him, you know he was incredibly special, and he'll be missed. He led the morning meetings for the last eight years. The group will never be the same, but he really has started something special. So we thank him for his service to this country, to the veterans of this country, and may he rest in peace.
Okay, I'm continuing to look to my left, I don't see any more adjourning on my left. Now to my right side, I don't see any on my right side. Members, this meeting is adjourned.